For this meeting to order. Please rise. Ladies and gentlemen, the United States of America and the Constitution for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in store.
In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, an active notice of this meeting has been provided as follows. On January 12th, 2017, notice was sent to the Home News Tribune, Star Ledger, local source, the clerk of beauty is appalled. By state law, there was no smoking permitted in this building at any time. In addition to the listed items in this agenda, this Board of Education may discuss and act upon other items not specifically referred to herein as is allowed at the regularly scheduled monthly board meeting under the sunshine law.
Okay, roll call.
Mr. Alvarez?
Here.
Mrs. Beviana?
President.
Mrs. Birch?
Here.
Mr. Martuzzi?
Here.
Ms. Slater?
Here.
Mr. Tapaleski?
Here.
Mrs. Bellani?
Here.
Mr. Worab?
Here.
Mr. Colvis?
Here.
Okay, somebody want to make a motion for a couple of minutes? So move.
Second.
Roll.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mrs. Beviana?
Yes.
Mr. Martuzzi?
Yes.
Ms. Slater?
Yes.
Mr. Tapaleski?
Yes.
Mrs. Bellani?
Yes.
Mr. Worab?
Yes.
Mr. Colvis?
Yes.
All right, at this time we'll open, that is for the public, if anybody has any questions, come up here to the podium. We'll have another, um, later on in the meeting, we'll also have another opportunity to come up here and speak as well. Anybody wishes to come, please do so. Okay, seeing none at this time, we'll go into the reports, um, our turn.
No reports.
Okay. Dr. Wotzzy, superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, everyone. Tonight's one of the special meetings that I look forward to every year. It's the night where we honor our teachers of the year, our outstanding teachers of the year, and our educational service professionals. So I'm gonna do my report, and then we're gonna do a little award ceremony, and we'll take some pictures. So I'd like to begin with, uh, the HIV report for this month. Uh, in our district this month, we have fifteen incidents of HIV reported. Three of those were validated as being HIV incidents, nine were not, and three were undetermined. Uh, the actions taken included counseling, detention, suspension, and in all instances the victims were counseled. Tomorrow night, uh, ladies and gentlemen of the board, we have our senior prom. This year, the senior prom is at Addison Park. It's a really beautiful place. Uh, I know our seniors have been looking forward to this for a, uh, for a long time, and I just want to remind all of our parents, um, to speak to their children about being responsible over this extended weekend. Uh, we love them, and we want them to be safe, and we want them to have fun and enjoy themselves. Also, I want to remind the board and the members of the public that next Thursday night is our, uh, annual Ball City Music and Art Festival. Uh, for, I think, three or four years now, we've held this event at the promenade on Wodeby. It's an outstanding event. It showcases all of the talent that we have here in Linden amongst our students. Um, if, hopefully, the weather will cooperate, and it'll be a really great night. If you haven't seen it, uh, please come out. In addition, the end of the school year is fast approaching. Uh, the last day of school for students is June 22nd. Our high school graduation will be held on June 23rd at 10:00 a.m. at Tiger Stadium. If there is inclement weather that morning, we'll try to postpone the event till 1:00 p.m., and if the weather is still not cooperating, at that time, we'll move the event till 6:00. Another big event in our district that happens every year is on June 6th, our local scholarship night, uh, Edmund High School. You know, each year, uh, thousands, hundreds of thousands of dollars are awarded to deserving seniors in Linden, uh, from local businesses, from local organizations, from private donors. And I just publicly want to thank all of those people for, uh, helping our students find a way to, and helping their parents find a way to help alleviate the burden of college tuition. Uh, thank you very much for supporting our kids. Just this afternoon, I received, um, a report on the lead water testing that we did over spring break. Uh, this, just this past year, the New Jersey Department of Education has required all school districts to test their school, uh, drinking water, um, and actually, all water supplies for lead. Um, tomorrow, I will be sending a letter to all the parents and the staff in the district. Overall, our reports came back very well. There were several areas that are in need of remediation, uh, so part of the letter will be the full report, uh, the areas that were identified, that tested above the, uh, EPA limit for lead and water, and what the district is doing to remediate those actions. And before we get to the real good stuff with our teachers of the year, I'd like to share a letter that I received from the Commissioner of Education today, uh, which was written to Mr. Nehat Gaverson, the lead founder of the proposed Union Arts and Science Charter School. I have been speaking about this issue for several months. I spoke publicly about this issue at the last board meeting. The charter school that was proposed to come to Linden has now surrendered its charter and will not be coming to Linden. And this is their response. I truly believe that our children, our parents can expect the best education for their children in our public schools here in Linden. And I believe that we have a district with outstanding, amazing teachers, with administrators who listen to parents, who when there is a problem will make change. If for some reason there are parents who are unhappy, we try to listen to them, we try to enact change for the better. I believe our district is going forward, and I believe we're going in the right direction. And I'm so proud to be the superintendent of schools here in Linden. And, um, one last note, I'd also like to publicly thank this Board of Education, who last night renewed my contract effective July 1st for an additional five years. So thank you, thank you for that. The most successful school districts have, um, stability and leadership, and, uh, I thank you very much for supporting me and all that we do, and we'll continue to get better every year. Let's talk about an amazing, Mr. Colvis, would you join me?
Absolutely.
It might mean something, how would you ask an additional board member to join us?
Um, yes, um, Beviana, would you like to come down?
Ladies and gentlemen, it is my great honor to, uh, tonight, uh, as the superintendent of schools recognizes our outstanding teachers of the year, is that on?
Is that on?
It's my, uh, testing. I have an emoji, a bit emoji, that says, is this thing on? Somebody has to answer your text messages. Is this thing on? It's my great honor and pleasure to, uh, tonight, uh, with the Board of Education recognize our outstanding teachers of the year and our educational support of staff members of the year. Uh, we have a small token of appreciation. Unfortunately, the regulations governing, uh, giving gifts to our faculty limit us to $10 or less. But you're getting an amazing mug, right? You're gonna get a fabulous pin, and, uh, and a beautiful certificate. We couldn't afford to frame them, so I didn't. By the way, if you get the certificate without the emoji on it, just switch it up later. So when I point you in, uh, please, we're gonna, we wanna recognize you. If you want to applaud each one of you, please come up, see Mr. Colvis for your certificate, see Mrs. Beviana for your gift bag, and then please stand next to me so we can take a quick picture. First, we're gonna honor our teachers of the year. Uh, from school number one, Sabina Robinson. From school number two, Larissa. From school number four, Jamie Schrempf. From school number five, Nancy Corodino. Nancy did tell me she had an event tonight with her, uh, with her own daughter, so do wanna recognize her anywhere. Uh, school number six, Jordan Nassim. From school number eight, Josephina Gill. From school number nine, Mitchell Orville. From school number ten, Kimberly Tynan. From McManus Middle School, Paige Dorn. From Solberg School, Sophia Robowski. Robowski, good. And last, but certainly not least, from Linden High School, Mr. Anthony Fushen. Let's give one big round of applause for our teachers of the year. Thank you, guys, congratulations. I would be relished if I could mention, uh, the administrators, principals, vice principals, uh, and colleagues who came out tonight to support their leadership efforts. Let's give them a round of applause. Tonight, we also recognize our educational service professional. These are people who do all of the other things. They may be teachers, they may be marketing, they may be paraprofessionals, they may be secretaries. That distinction doesn't matter. They love our kids, and they're being recognized tonight because they love our kids. From school number one, Katie Cunningham. From school number two, I think school number one might have the most people. Uh, from school number two, Kara O'Donnell. From school number four, Lisa Van Den. From school number five, the person who always greets me with a big smile on her face, Miss Jane White. From school number six, Linda Castella. From school number eight, Denise Hughes. Representing school number nine, Marissa Kudick. From school number ten, James McGowan. From McManus Middle School, Joanne Donatia. From Solberg Middle School, Sandra Dixon. And from Linden High School, but also representing our entire district, our illustrious, magnificent competitors, Joyce Hertz. Let's give everyone one big round of applause. So, uh, sometimes it's a thankless job, but please know that every day, you have the opportunity to impact children's lives. Thank you is not enough, but it's the most I can offer you, the most heartfelt thanks for what you do for our children every single day. We have one tiny little presentation, if you would, guys, if you just hold on one second, we have one little presentation, uh, gonna turn it over to Mr. Colvis. You wanna recognize one more person?
I'd like at this time to recognize one of our board members, Teresa Valani. She's been on the board for a year, and she's met all the requirements, um, for board leadership certification, and she's the only one, really, on our board, uh, first-year person who's accomplished this in a long, long time. And that's due to her diligence and her, she absolutely cares about what she does, and she's there for the kids and the schools, and I'm so happy to give this a round of applause. Mr. President, that concludes.
Yes, sir. Okay, we'll now go into our regular reports. Um, first report of the curriculum instruction. Uh, Mrs. Beviana?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Curriculum and Instruction Committee, upon recommendation of the superintendent of schools and the assistant superintendent, present the following motions to Linden Board of Education for approval. Items one through six deal with the approval of specialized programs for the placement of classified students, determination of out-of-district placements, the approval of payments for related services, adjustments to tuition costs as per the NJDOE audit, and the approval of occupational and physical therapy services. Item seven approves payment schedule for extracurricular activities. Eight approves historic dates for athletic practice sessions. Items nine and 10 approve the enrollment of Linden High School in the NJSIAA and authorizes the payment of dues. Eleven approves the participation of Linden High School in the football playoffs sponsored by MJSIAA. Item 12 approves participation in the Linden High School in the wrestling team championships and individual championships. Thirteen and fourteen grant permission for the athletic department to conduct summer weight training and summer workout sessions. Fifteen approves the use of vantage form relief for sports registration. Items sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen approve the food allowance program, scouting expenses, and bowling fees. Nineteen amends board action on past CNI reports. Twenty approves curriculum. Twenty-one grants permission for use of facilities and school activities. Twenty-two approves district field trips and amendments. Twenty-three, twenty-four, and forty-two approve training for district staff. Twenty-five approves professional development activities. Twenty-six approves summer schools and online programs. Twenty-seven grants approval for the Linden Public Schools to participate in the Future Ready Schools Program. Twenty-eight grants approval for our memorandum of understanding between the Linden Public Schools and Educators International. Twenty-nine authorizes the submission of the bilingual program waiver request for the 2017-18. Item thirty recognizes and congratulates eighteen 12th grade students for achieving the NJDOE seal of biodiversity. Thirty-one authorizes a cooperative agreement between Linden High School and the Shandin Foreign Language School. Thirty-two grants approval to submit application for the New Jersey Second Language Learning Regional Model Program Initiative, English as a Second Language. Thirty-three authorizes the submission of the bilingual ESL-ELS three-year program plan. Thirty-four grants approval for Bright Beginning Therapy Dog Ing to conduct sessions of school number two. Thirty, excuse me. Thirty-five grants approval to enter into an agreement with Essex Regional Ed Services Commission to provide the title ID services to students in the Union County Youth Detention Center. Thirty-six grants approval to prepare and submit the ESSA and CLD application for the 2017-18 school year. Thirty-seven recognizes and congratulates two 12th grade Linden High School students for achieving the highest academic ranking. Thirty-eight, thirty-nine, and forty approve school talk schedules. And item forty-one approves superintendent's determination and actions taken for all reported incidents of harassment, intimidation, and bullying as discussed at the April 26, 2017 regular meeting. Mr. President, I move curriculum and instruction, items one through forty-two, and respectfully seek a second.
Second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mrs. Beviana?
Yes.
Mr. Martuzzi?
Yes.
Ms. Slater?
Yes.
Mr. Tapaleski?
Yes.
Mrs. Bellani?
Yes.
Mr. Worab?
Yes.
Mr. Colvis?
Yes.
All right, we'll move on to management operations. Uh, Mr. Tapaleski?
Thank you, Mr. President. Management Operations Committee, upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, present the following fifty-three items to the Board of Education for approval. Item one is the passing of a former employee.
Dr. Wotzzy?
Thank you, uh, Mr. Tapaleski. I know that many, uh, people on this board and, and myself personally, were, I was deeply saddened to hear about the passing of Barbara O'Halloran, who worked for the Linden Board of Education for forty years. Uh, Barbara started her career in 1958 as a part-time physical education teacher, and she was appointed full-time in 1980. On behalf of the entire Linden School District, I offer our most heartfelt sympathies to her family.
Item two, retirements.
Thank you, again, Mr. Tapaleski. I had the, the pleasure of working with two, both of these paraprofessionals who are retiring, Angel Pahana and, uh, who happens to be in the audience. I, well, we worked together for a few years, right?
Yes.
More than a few.
Yeah.
Uh, Angel's retiring after, uh, working for the Board of Education at Linden High School for twenty-seven?
Thirty.
Thirty! Well, my, my math is wrong.
Yes.
Thirty years, all at Linden High School.
No, not all at Linden, twenty-eight Linden High School, school six, the other twenty-seven months.
You know what? Long enough. Very happy for you, uh, very happy for you, Angel. Congratulations on, on your retirement. I always speak for, for the board and the entire district. We thank you for all you've done for our students over the years. Uh, and I had the opportunity to also work with Beverly Luckins when I was the principal at school number six, and just a lovely, lovely person who loved kids and came to work every day with a smile on her face, and, and we'll miss you too, Deb, I don't think you're out there, but, uh, congratulations to both of you on your retirements, and we wish you, um, much good health.
Thank you, Dr. Wotzzy. Item three is amended passport actions. Item four is to appoint following certificated staff for the 2017-18 school year. Item five is to approve use of absences for the following staff. Item six is to approve assignment upon return from a leave of absence for next school year. Item seven is approve the transfer of the following staff for the 2017-18 school year effective nine months seventeen. Item eight is to approve and transfer the following staff for the 17-18 school year effective July 1st, uh, 2017. Item nine is approve the following reassignment within the building for the 2017-18 school year. Item ten is to appoint the following as childcare workers for the 2017-18 school year paid from the enterprise fund. Item eleven is to reappoint the following 12-month administrators for the 2017-18 school year, uh, pay, terms, and conditions established per negotiated collective bargaining agreement. Item twelve, pursuant to the provisions entitled A-28-10, reappoint and award an employee contract to non-tainted certificating teaching staff members listed for the 17-18 school year. Item thirteen is to reappoint and award important contract of following staff members for the 17-18 year. Item fourteen is to authorize the execution of an annual appointment agreement for the unclassified personnel listed per established pay form of associate, uh, get guide and staff. Item fifteen is reappoint the following department chairpersons for the 17-18 school year. Item sixteen is reappoint the following secretarial staff for the 17-18 school year with the secretary of personnel listed as per negotiated. Item seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-six, thirty-seven, thirty-eight, forty-one, forty-two, forty-three, forty-four, forty-five, fifty, fifty-one, fifty-two, fifty-three. All right, to appoint the following staff for various full and part-time positions. Item thirty-three is approve additional summer work from the Item thirty-three is approve additional summer work from the, from June twenty-sixth to August third for the social, uh, following social work, and the period rates are to be mutually decided by the social worker and director. Item thirty-nine is grant permission for the following physicians to, uh, implement physical examinations of students participating in district athletic program for the seventeen-18 school year. Physicals can begin June fifteenth. Item forty is to approve the following nurses as medical bus aides for the seventeen-18 school year. Item forty-six, uh, is a resolution, uh, for, uh, that has been determined that one quantitative goal for Dr. Robotosi has been achieved and has been satisfied, and that, um, be further resolved upon receipt of confirmation, satisfaction, uh, goal by the county superintendent, uh, the app, applicable merit bonus will be provided. And forty-seven is two, uh, qualitative calls, I believe. Was that correct, Dr. Robotosi?
Uh, one, uh, qualitative.
Right, qualitative. Have also been achieved. And, uh, again, it, once the county superintendent agrees, uh, Dr. Robotosi will be, uh, will acquire the applicable merit bonus. Item forty-eight is to approve the settlement agreement released between employee ten, sixteen, seventeen, and the Linden Board of Education. Mr. President, I move management operations items one through fifty to four, and respectfully seek a second.
Second.
Second, all right, roll call, please.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mrs. Benjana?
Yes.
Mr. Martusi?
Yes.
Ms. Slater?
Yes.
Mr. Topaleski?
Yes.
Mrs. Galani?
Yes.
Mr. Worrath?
Yes, to all except those abstaining from item number nine, Stacy Minot.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Okay, support operations, Mr. Alvarez?
Thank you, Mr. President. Support Operations Committee, upon the recommendation of Superintendent Schools and the District Administrator Board Secretary, present the following motions to the Linden Board of Education for approval. Item one through eight, monthly board business approval. Items nine, ten are to amend pass board action. Eleven to accept funds. Twelve to accept termination of a lightweight wheelchair and patron Susan Paulino. Thirteen to approve payment to environmental remediation management for environmental services as listed. Fourteen to approve a contract with Energy for America for professional engineering services as listed. Fifteen to award a contract to Pooja Restoration Company for mainstream restoration and lay of work based on a low bid received on May eighteenth, 2017. Item sixteen and seventeen are to approve a contract renewal for environmental remediation and management company as asbestos management coordinator and for right-to-know services for 2017-18 fiscal year in the amount as listed. Eighteen is to renew a contract, third year or three years, with interstate waste services in the amount as listed for garbage and trash disposal services based on a low bid received on May thirteenth, 2015. Nineteen is to approve the renewal of contract with Thomas C. Leenzey, architect and moving consultant for professional architectural and moving consulting services as listed. Twenty to approve the reappointment of Energy for America in the amount as listed for professional engineering facilities management program services for the 2017-18 fiscal year. Twenty-one is the contract renewal for Suple, Ploney, and Company as school auditors to perform the 2016-17 annual school audit as listed. Twenty-two is to approve the annual software support and maintenance agreement with Info Big in the amount as listed with a period of July first, 2017 through June thirtieth, 2018. Twenty-three is to approve a renewal contract with automated building controls for H-back services for school number four, so the term and amount as listed. Twenty-four is a renewal of contract with Partland School Solutions for the annual licensing fees for district-wide POS systems in the amount and term as listed. Twenty-five is to approve a contract renewal with Asset Works Inc. for inventory appraisal services in the amount and term as listed. Twenty-six is the renewal of full services management contract for the 2017-18 school year with Pomptonian full service for administrative and management costs, year five of five as listed. Twenty-seven is to authorize the District Administrator for Secretary to enter to cooperative pricing agreement with Educational Services Commission of New Jersey for the purchase of goods and services. Twenty-eight is establishment of tuition costs for the Linden Pub Schools for the 2017-18 school year as listed. Twenty-nine to forty-six are the approvals for out-of-district students to attend Linden Pub Schools on tuition basis for the 2017-18 school year. Third is the designation of signatories for the various board education accounts as listed. Thirty-one is the designation of the banks as listed. Thirty-two, the approval of public bidding thresholds as listed. Thirty-three to thirty-four, the approval of contract for professional legal services with the Weiner, Milwaukee, National Council, Labor Council, Council for People's Services, and Special Projects, and Scarrinsey, Holland Pass, as special council for facilities and construction services at the rate and term listed. Thirty-five is to authorize the expenditure limit for all legal services in accordance with NJAC six A twenty-three A dash nine point three. Thirty-six, the appointment of Licara, Reno, an architect of record for the fee and term as listed. Thirty-seven is to authorize the Superintendent and District Administrator Board Secretary to implement the 2017-18 annual school budget. Thirty is the approval of the Linden Pub Schools' purchasing manual. Thirty-nine is the approval of Linden Pub Schools' guide for standard operating procedures and internal controls. Forty is the approval to advertise for quotes, bids, and state contracts for the year. Forty-one, the approval for archway school not to charge students with reduced or paid meals in compliance with the NJ Department of Culture Child Nutrition Program Regulations. Forty-two, the approval of bids and petitions as listed. Forty-three is the approval to renew a time and material contract as listed. Forty-four is the approval to dispose of surplus equipment. Forty-five, the approved contract for address removal based on the low bid received on May twenty-third, 2017. Facilities. Uh, number one is to amend board action taking a prior board meeting as listed. Item two to nine are the approvals for the use of facilities and no charge as listed. Item six, the approval for use of school facilities for the June sixth, 2017 primary election. And item number ten is the approval for the use of facilities at a service charge as listed. Mr. President, items one through forty-five of finance and items one through ten of facilities, respectfully, I seek for a second.
Second.
One through forty-six.
One through forty-six.
Okay, if you have a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mrs. Benjana?
Yes.
Mr. Martusi?
Yes.
Ms. Slater?
Yes.
Mr. Topaleski?
Yes.
Mrs. Galani?
Yes.
Mr. Worrath?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
All right, planning and policy, Mr. Worrath?
The Planning and Policy Committee submits for first and second reading to incorporate new features required by code and law and to elaborate on local district policies. For second reading, six one four five, extracurricular activities. This paragraph was edited to be more consistent with the wording from the Comprehensive Equity Plan Assessment. Six one four five point one slash six one four five point two, intramural competition, interstalative competition, edit section on equality and empathy. Six one four six, graduation requirements, edited to be more current and consistent with law, code, and state assessment. Six one six two point five, research. Policy was reworded on a section added regarding parent guardian notification. Six one six three point one, media center library, edit requirements of NJAC six A one three dash two point one to the first paragraph regarding required service and access to computers and instructional materials. Six one six four point four, child study team revised to be more consistent with current law. Six one seven one, special education programs revised to be more consistent with current law. Six one seven three, home instruction revised to be more consistent with the current law. I move these, uh, for second reading, and respectfully, I seek a second.
Second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mrs. Benjana?
Yes.
Mr. Martusi?
Yes.
Ms. Slater?
Yes.
Mr. Topaleski?
Yes.
Mrs. Galani?
Yes.
Mr. Worrath?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
All right, and we'll move on to our reports, special committees. Our State Delegate, Mr. Topaleski?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have quite an extensive report because it's been a busy month since last meeting. Two weeks ago, Monday, I believe, uh, Dr. Robotosi, myself, and Mr. Walters attended a, uh, launching of, uh, a program that, Mrs. Benjana, we just passed a resolution about, which is called Future Ready Schools. Uh, it's a program that's co-sponsored by State Board of Education, New Jersey School Boards Association, and the NJIT. By passing that resolution tonight, after speaking with Mr. Walters earlier this evening, we are ready to file our documents so that we can, uh, see if we are considered a future ready school. Basically, it's a guideline of, uh, what you need in technology to move ahead so that you're on the forefront, and, uh, we know that we have been there, and so, we're hoping that if everything goes well, we'll be recognized in, uh, October at the School Boards Workshop. Uh, on the thirteenth, I sent, I attended, I'm on the Legislative Committee, uh, on New Jersey School Boards, and we had a meeting down in Trenton. Uh, and, uh, basically, the attorneys and the, and lobbyists for school boards updated us on, uh, some of the legislation that's been moving through. Uh, one of the big ones has to do with, uh, school funding, as you know. Uh, a while back, the governor presented his proposal. Right now, the legislature's working on it, and has to be approved by the end of June. Uh, but one of the caveats that the governor included was that he wanted them to review and come up with some new kind of formula. His particular formula, the one that he presented, would be unconstitutional, and everybody knows that, so that's not moving ahead. Both of the other people that are looking, both of the other people that talked about a new formula, uh, Prado and Sweeney, uh, both were talking about adding additional funds. So, uh, we'll see what happens, uh, as that moves along. Uh, in other news, on April twentieth, uh, Sweeney and Education Chair Louise expressed their, sent a letter to the State Board of Education expressing their concern over park as a graduation requirement. So, those of you who are not big fans of park, and I know there's a lot of people here who are not, uh, be aware that the legislature isn't even, at least not as, as the sole graduation criteria. Other bills, uh, it was discussed earlier, uh, by Mr. Alvarez about the water testing. Uh, what happened was the legislature passed, legislature passed the bill, and it only accounted for, uh, from June, uh, two thousand sixteen. Uh, and then, when they realized that some people had been testing on their own, uh, they moved it back to January of two thousand sixteen. So, anybody who did the testing can apply for the money. And, uh, discussion was made, uh, of the ten, of the ten million dollars, not many people had applied yet, but, I know, we're on our way, as I discussed that, uh, with Ms. Gabriel. Uh, there's another bill about homeless student costs, if the student is homeless for more than a year, uh, the, the state will take over, and it wouldn't be the district that he was homeless from. Uh, varsity letters for non, uh, non-support extracurriculars, uh, textbooks for every student, uh, a new computer science endorsement, uh, which is an instructional endorsement, uh, and other things. Tomorrow, I will be attending a legislative day down in Trenton, uh, where school board members meet with, um, hopefully legislators. Uh, it starts, uh, at nine o'clock in the morning and runs till two in the afternoon. Then, this past Saturday, I had a, the delegate assembly. At the delegate assembly, we got the last report from current President Don Webster, his term ended. Uh, we also got a report on our school board finances from Mike McClure, Vice President in Charge of Finance, and then, um, Executive Director Larry Feinside gave us an update on New Jersey School Boards. Uh, unique in the country is a, um, study that we did, which looked into student achievement. Uh, and, uh, on Tuesday, I believe, Mrs. Cleary and myself will be, uh, attending a workshop The report gave eighty-three recommendations for improving instruction, and, uh, some of them, we literally had to change, uh, policies of the school boards, uh, to coincide with their recommendations. And they talked about, um, how important county school board meetings were, and that , uh, they increased the attendance, and it improved the training, the grant programs, tech services, STEEMEd, which is a, um, in, in, uh, coordination with the Army, sustainability, which is in coordination with TCNJ, Labor, uh, Labor Management Collaborative, which is, uh, with Rutgers, and Future Ready Schools, which I mentioned earlier, uh, which is in conjunction with NJIT. The lead testing bill, uh, the, the change in the superintendent's salary cap, the addition of place for security officers, uh, and response evaluation. The seventeen-18 budget has no dues increases, and, uh, non-dues revenue accounts for thirty-four percent of the total, uh, budget with no reduction in services. New officers were elected at that meeting. Dan Sinclair is, uh, who some of our board members met at the county meeting. Uh, he was the county, uh, Vice President, is now the new president. There's a new Vice President in Charge of County Activities, Christie Teague. Uh, Vice President of Finance, Mike McClure, was reelected, and there's a new, uh, legislative resolution of Vice President, his name is Brandon Pew. So, there were changes made in some of the codes. There were two resolutions that we, uh, we worked on. Uh, one from Edison had to do with charter schools. Uh, charter schools with school boards is a major issue, uh, primarily because of how they come to be, that it doesn't take much to get a charter school, and of sixteen charter schools that applied this past year, fifteen were approved. So, it's not very difficult to get a charter school approved, through, at least through step one. So, that was very contentious, and there was at least forty-five minutes of discussion on that one, and it wound up being tabled in Senate Committee. Uh, Resolution two was from, uh, District, uh, in the South Waterford, which had to do with hiring a temporary superintendent. And basically, what happened was they, they suspended their superintendent. Uh, they didn't know for how long, they didn't know if he would be coming back. Uh, they are extending district, they made a deal with the district that, uh, they sent their case to, and the superintendent agreed to, for a short time period, be the superintendent at no, at no pay, and the state wouldn't approve it. Uh, because there's certain regulations as to, uh, using a shared superintendent, and that didn't fit with them. So, what we're, what basically we did was, uh, in our policy manual, and we're gonna have our lobbyists trying to get that, uh, approved as a bill, just on a temporary basis. And, uh, that concludes my state report.
Thank you. Uh, ought to stop. How about county?
County report. Hey, hey, county report today, right? We had county meeting, uh, last Wednesday. Uh, they reelected officers, uh, this guy named Ray Topaleski was reelected, uh, President from Linden. Vice President Lynn Anderson from Plainfield, and Vice President Rob Dinan from New Providence. At every county meeting, they tried to get a state, uh, officer to show up, and Dan Sinclair, of course, he's, he's close enough by, usually it was ours, he was, uh, Vice President in Charge of County Affairs, he is the new president, so he was there, uh, we had dinner with him. Uh, Assemblywoman Annette Cuigano, Assemblyman Jerry Green, and Senator Tom King were also there, and each spoke a little. Uh, legislative relations, Chris Jones talked about some of the things that I just talked about, and then we had board awards, uh, and milestones. Mrs. Galani received her award for new board member achievement, uh, I received an award for a certified board leader, which we did a while back. I also, one of the things that they did was, uh, they used to only give out awards for longevity at very high levels. I think it was twenty years was the thing. Well, anybody knows about getting elected, knows that it takes a lot more to, uh, takes a lot of work to get that far. lot of work to get that far. So, what they did was they dropped it down to give awards every five years after ten years. So, our own, Mrs. Beniana received her ten-year award. So, uh, and now we'll see some of that in, that concludes my county report.
Okay, um, I was in charge of Educational Services Committee. I went to the meeting, and I'm going, no, I'm not going, you're going next.
I will go.
Okay, that's all I have to say about that. All right, um, all right, uh, next, uh, we'll have, uh, EST for high school students, Mr. Walrath.
All right, um, thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of Ms. Burge, who cannot be here tonight, we're reading her parent and student EST reports. The student EST met on both May first and May twenty-third. Mr. Fakiti and Ms. Lewis were the advisors that attended. Mrs. Burge was the board member that attended. In attendance for the students were two freshmen, four sophomores, one junior, and three seniors, four gentlemen, and six ladies. The students still had some concerns about the lunches being served and how the food tastes is prepared and the variety of meals offered on the menu. There were occasions about, there were concerns about lunch money being credited to the account but not having immediate access to use the money that is credited to their account. A student was concerned about the safety of being sent home to change his or her clothes when he or she was not dressed properly. The students would like to see ID scanners in all the classrooms to help with making the attendance easy and faster in home room and class, as well as for the safety of the students and knowing who is in the class. A foul order was a concern when the students entered the building in the vestibule. The cause of the order was the wet carpet that is still being addressed. A concern was raised about making the dance room, a pep rally for winter and spring sports is a big concern for the students because they feel as if all sports get recognized so should the winter and spring sports. There are still concerns about the restrooms and supplies being available to students such as soap, paper towels, toilet paper, and sanitary products. Um, because ID testing is at the PRD, PDRC, and the students have to walk to and from the high school, a concern for walking back and forth for lunches has been brought to our attention. Some students test double periods, so they have to walk to the PDRC and back and forth, uh, to the main building, and then walk back to the PDRC, and then again, back to the main building. The students would like to see microwaves in the cafeteria. Uh, some students are asking for a study hall built into their schedule because some are taking IV classes and then have sports, and after school, they said it would really help them out, uh, if they had a period to do homework or study. There, there are some positive things that they like that are going on in the high school. Uh, the students love the fruit cups and especially the ice cream the cafeteria is now offering. They are very excited about.
I love me a fruit cup, too. Love me a fruit cup.
Wait up. The students are very excited for the prom, which Dr. Robotosi said is tomorrow, and they're equally excited about the banquet bash and the graduation. They asked a lot of questions about the upcoming school picnic and are also excited for that. We have not scheduled a last meeting for the two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen school year, but we will be meeting again in June. This concludes my report, Mr. President, thank you.
Thank you very much, okay. Now we'll move on to, uh, any unfinished business before we put the board? Oh, yeah, the other, the other one, okay. All right, we're gonna move back then to, um, EST pounds.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will be reading the parent EST on behalf of Mrs. Burge. The parent EST was held on Tuesday, May second, at the board office. The meeting started at six-thirty PM. In attendance was Mrs. Bellani, Mrs. Slater, Mr. Colvin, and Mrs. Burge. We had thirteen moms that attended the meeting. The meeting opened up with our guest speaker, Mr. Athletic Director, um, Mr. Vienna, our Athletic Director. Uh, currently, we have twenty-two varsity programs, ten middle school programs, eighty certified coaches, one thousand seven hundred fifty student athletes. He gave an extensive report about the sports programs in our district. He discussed all the sports that we have to offer, the benefits of our athletic participation, athletic safety, and the start dates for programs, as well as how to sign up. But we'd like to thank Mr. Vienna for his superb and informative presentation. Moving on to some concerns that were expressed at the meeting. The security cameras at school nine are still not working properly. The lunch menu has some concerns, as in, in one week, the children are getting some type of pizza, three times a week. For instance, Monday, it would be pizza crunchers. On Wednesday, they are serving pizza, and again, on Friday, they are serving pizza. The concern is that there should be a variety. The farm stand at school six and M. McManus does not get replenished, and McManus, the farm stand is not cold.
The farm stand?
The farm stand?
The food, uh, served from the food stand is very warm. The gymnasium at school five is extremely hot. There seems to be no ventilation in the gymnasium. The children are complaining it is too hot, as well as we had parents with difficulties due to the extreme heat. There was a concern about the snowplow when we had the big, no, big snowstorm. Mountains snow were piled up, and it made it extremely hard and extremely unsafe for the children crossing the streets on Woody Avenue by school six. If there is a way that board of ed and city could work together to make sure the pathways by the school are safe so that the children who do walk to school can get there safely. Over at Soul Middle School, there was a concern about the Twenty-First Century Corner. The first concern was that there were several programs that they feel were cut, such as parent workshops and family nights. Another concern was that the program, the teachers are supposed to be helping the students with homework, and that is not taking place. To end on a good note, we have two students in the district who are working on their silver award, Girl Scouts Caitlin Walsh and Allison Padavanna. Together with Ms. Dunn and Mr. Fingerlin, they are starting an art club. They are hoping to meet Thursdays after school to create amazing art projects. We will be meeting again on Wednesday, June seventh, at six-thirty PM in the board office, and our guest speaker will be Mrs. Tardavita, and she will be speaking about and discussing the new changes that have been made to the summer reading program. We have light refreshments and are looking forward to seeing new faces, as well as our dedicated parents that come every month. This concludes my report, Mr. President.
Okay, thanks. Mr. Martucci.
Sorry. I just want a short item, uh, on May eighth, the Department of Special Services under direction of Dr. Stefan, had an evening meeting with about twelve families that attended, reading and writing going hand in hand. And what they did talk about is the strategies of parents on handwriting and reading for the charter. And they spoke where the charter should be developmentally at a certain area, and, uh, they gave a lot of tips, strategies, and it was very well received by the parents.
Thank you. Okay, now we go with any unfinished business?
Mr. Colvin, that just one comment, uh, as many of, as the board knows, and many members of the public know, a few months ago, this board, uh, got the resolution naming the high school auditorium after, um, our beloved, uh, deceased board member, Mrs. Susan Hudat. Um, we will be dedicating, the formal dedication will be occurring at next month's board meeting on Wednesday, June twenty-eighth. Our board, our, excuse me, our board meeting is scheduled for, uh, seven PM. The dedication will take place at six PM. Uh, we will be sending out formal invitations, and it will be opening up to any member of the community who wants to attend. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um, any board member have any comments on the business before we put the board?
I just wanna real quick say thank you to Dr. Robotosi and the administration and the other board members for working hard to make sure that the charter schools can come to Linden. I think you guys did a great job.
Thank you. Yes, you did. Thank you. Okay, at this time, we'll open up, uh, the extended comments of the public, please. All right, saying none, then I will, uh, ask for motion to the justice.
So, move.
Second.
Long favor.
Aye.
All right.[1784.76]